Well, good evening and welcome to All About the Valley. And tonight, well, my guest tonight is Becky Rushford. And she is the Chair of the Planning Board, Northridge Planning Board. A job I had a long time ago. And you've got a lot of things going on. There's been a lot of building going on in Northbridge.
Yeah, there's a good amount.
Yeah, a lot of housing developments, but we're talking primarily about this one that proposed at the town meeting.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
And we're talking about town meeting zoning. We might get right into it because, you know, we've got an hour and we've got a lot to cover. Basically, that's our backdrop there, so that's an idea of what we're talking about. But the first article that would come up is by the Board of Selectmen. And that is Article Eight. And that is to take the property that the town owns right now in this area off of 122 in Lynnwood. If you want to, 122 or 122. Well, you might say across from Haberl.
Yes.
In that general area. And that's, the Lynnwood Stretch, they call it.
Yes.
And, because that used to be a big dip in. It used to go way down, it used to go down to the bottom. And it was a good-sized hill, it would go down and up. And the state decided in their wisdom to fill it in and make it a nice straightaway, which they did.
Nice.
But now that land is not accessible. So here's a chance to get some use out of it by turning it over to the developers. And it will also give us back part of it as well as other area in their development with open space.
That's correct.
So we're not gonna, we're not gonna end up with a negative open space situation.
That's correct.
We'll actually, we'll actually end up with more open space with their development.
Yes, accessible open space.
Yes, yes, accessible, which is not right now.
That's correct.
Yeah, you'd have to climb down that banking to be able to access it.
Yes.
And so if you're walking, it'd be a pain in the neck. Never mind, you never get in there without, with your mountain bike. It's just crazy. But anyway, that's, that's the first article coming up. And by the Board of Selectmen, that is Article Eight. Article Nine is a very important one.
Yes.
And that is by the Planning Board. And this is something new now. The state only allowed this in the last few years, I guess. Where they came up with this concept of a 40R.
That's correct.
As opposed to a 40B. 40B's been around for many years now.
Yes.
And if you don't know what a 40B is, what a 40B is, allows the developer to come in, build according to what they want to do, not follow the rules, the subdivision rules and regs. They can, they don't have to do granite curving, they don't have to do certain landscaping. They can just about come in and build a bunch of, a big block of housing, and that's it. And it's affordable.
Yes.
So you have no control and you have, you have no incentive. You can't even, you have no control over the design of the housing.
No.
So they can, may look ugly, but you got it. Whereas with the 40R, now that's a little bit different. Now, the Planning Board oversees that.
Correct.
And the Planning Board handles a lot of building. They oversee all, all construction that is done other than 40Bs. So they're quite familiar with the constructing. And then they have to go through the hearing process as well.
That's, that's one of the most important parts.
Yeah, whereas under a 40B, they don't have to do any hearings. They just come in, their zoning board will oversee to make sure they do somewhat correct. But they had no public hearings, so you get no input from the public, no traffic to studies, nothing. So where 40R, you would have a traffic study, you'd have public hearings, you'd have, it, it, design concepts come up that would have to be approved by the Planning Board. And every, and even the rail. As well as you can get other features. You can get playground access, you can get playgrounds, you can get parking access. All these things could be required. Whereas with a 40B, they don't require, there's no requirements. Basically, do whatever they want to do to make it as affordable as they can to build.
It's a higher density, so you're gonna wind up with much higher density.
Yes, that's the other thing too, is much higher density. But if the Planning Board, if you do pass that article, Article Nine, it doesn't make a difference on this development. All it does is allow them to present it.
Correct.
Okay, and we can look at doing it.
Correct.
So it doesn't, it doesn't approve it, it doesn't start, they don't start building it in next week.
Yeah, a yes vote for this article. It, it covers the zoning article change only. It does not approve this specific project. That project then goes for approval and hearing through the Planning Board.
This actually opens up, to prevent it anywhere else in town.
Yes.
If they want to come in with a 40B somewhere else, you can say, no, you gotta do the 40R.
Yes, so the more market rate housing that we build in town, the more we get further and further from that required 10%.
Yes, yes. I, one time we were about 8%.
Yeah.
And now I think we're down to about 6.
Yeah, we're around 6 now.
Yeah, so I mean, you see, and that's because of, housing has kept going up in price. I mean, I would never thought we'd see, an average, a starter home in Northbridge is running around half a million dollars.
Yeah.
And we have homes that are selling for over a million. So, I mean, it, it, and this is not changing, it's not, they're not going down, they keep going up.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, it's, it, you really gotta be, we're gonna have to protect ourselves. Because there is land out there where this could happen elsewhere.
Yes, and land that's not appropriate for that density.
Exactly. But the state is also promoting them doing 40Bs because the state looks at this as a housing situation, problem in the, in the state. And there's a rent problem and getting costly, so the state is promoting it. So you want to be able to keep yourself, your home protection in, and that's what a 40R does. In fact, the legislature gave us a chance to protect our individual communities by passing that 40R. So it's, it's very important that we get that passed.
It's a great, it's a great incentive. So a yes vote for a 40R, it maintains local control.
Yes.
We get to control what it looks like. We get to control what's there. We did a housing production plan in 2023. So initially, that, that land was looked at for a development. And we said, the then-Chairin, Brian Massey, said, hold on. And the Board said, let's do a housing production plan to see what Northbridge needs specifically. And so, once the housing production plan was completed, we found that our person, our need for the town was what's considered low. So there are three, uh, three tiers. Low, extremely low, and then there's a third one. And very, uh, low, very low, and extremely low.
Yes.
So we're at that low, which is 80% median income.
Yeah.
For the area.
Yeah, so, I mean, this, we, we qualify for, oh, we had a phone call.
Oh, we had a phone call.
Okay, it's quick too. Go ahead, Cole, you're on.
Hey, good evening.
Hi, Barry.
Yeah, um, uh, I just wanna say, I just wanna thank Becky, the Planning Board, and Gary for all their excellent efforts and everything they, they do for the town. And, you know, a 40R, or, you know, in the 40S is more, uh, a better benefit for the, for the town than a 40B.
Oh, absolutely.
But I don't want people to get too tied up in it because, I mean, Gary has done an excellent housing plan for the town. And I've had other town planners review our housing plan. And, you know, and we have, if the Rockdale Mill Housing Plan goes in, I think we, we might pretty close have a, a good safe harbor when it comes to a 40B. Plus, we have an excellent town council that, there are reasons that the, the town can deny 40B for. So, uh, but, 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 but on this case, uh, you know, a 40R and a, and a 40S is, is more recommended in, in, in my opinion.
Well, you know, you say the town can deny 40B, but it's getting harder. The state is trying to limit it.
Right, but I mean, when you, when you put, when you put the preponderance of everything that we have, like I said, Gary's excellent, uh, present housing plan, uh, you know, the, the potential housing that's gonna be coming online at the Rockdale Mills, if that's approved, and some other potential, other projects, uh, you know, that 6% is gonna be increased. And, uh, and like I said, there are, there are some other reasons that I'm sure our town council is familiar with that a 40B can be denied. So I just don't want people to feel like they got a sword of, um, over their heads that if, but if they don't do something, we're gonna get a 40B. So I mean, I, I just, you know, just wanted to throw that thought out.
Right, well, I, I wouldn't, I, I still think you're taking a chance if you don't get the 40R.
I'm saying, you're saying there might be, but I'm just saying that you still, you still have some avenues to fight a 40B if, if that happens. But, uh, but I mean, hopefully, you know, like I said, the, the registered voters will support the, um, the 40R and the, and the 40S.
Right, yeah, we're gonna get into the 40S.
But now, now it's my understanding that, you know, if, you know, if the 40R and the 40S passes, and also if the development passes down the road, the town would hopefully receive a $1.3 million bonus payment from the state.
We're gonna get into that, yeah, you're actually.
Which would be some extra money for the schools. But that's, you know, again, that's potential money coming from the state. And, you know, things can happen with the state area, we saw that during the 1980s.
Well, yeah, I mean, that money isn't guaranteed.
Right, right, I mean, it's being cautiously optimistic, you know?
Right, especially since the state has been dipping into those budgets for illegals.
Right, right, and then the whole, the whole economic picture in general.
Right, but they still have potential. And the school, the school is actually down on enrollment.
Right, um.
So we're not, we don't, we wouldn't have to build a new school, we've got plenty of room.
Yeah, well, they're saying if this project is approved, you're talking anywhere between 850 to 1100 new students coming into the school system.
No, I don't think that, no, there's no way.
Potentially moving the fifth grade to the middle school to open up additional room for, uh, you know, for, for school choice. But, uh, you know, I guess it, it's just a lot of preliminary talk at this time, you know?
No, there's no way it'd be that number.
Yeah, well, you're talking, you're talking, uh, five, five massive 62-unit apartments. And if you figure, uh, let's say, two or three, uh, uh, you know, students in each of those apartments, times 331, um, you know, it, it comes roughly out to like 850. But then you don't know if there are gonna be any students living in the, uh, over age 55, you know?
Well, no, you can't.
You can't have them.
You can't have any over 55. You gotta be over 55 to live there.
Yeah.
Well, I, what I, what I asked was, as I said, was, was there any, was there any legal precursor from stopping their children or their grandchildren from living with them?
Oh, absolutely.
I was told that there wasn't, but if there is, that'd be great.
I said on the Planning Board, Barry, when we approved the old 55.
Okay, so, so if anybody over age 55, uh, they're the only ones that can live there?
That's right.
Okay, all right, 'cause I, 'cause I asked that question and they said that they couldn't restrict their, their children or their grandchildren from living with them?
No, not living with, they can visit.
Mm-hmm, right.
But they can't live there.
Okay, so I mean, well, I, I guess then you get into, you know, uh, treading the needle of, you know, well, they're, they're guests or whatnot. But, but, uh, you know, hopefully that, that it's all over age 55, you know?
I know it was a situation where a person died and the children had inherited it, wanted to live there, but they weren't 55, they had to sell it.
Yeah, no, I mean, if that, if that's correct, that, that, that's better, that'll, that'll lower the number of potential students in the, in the, in the school.
Well, that's one advantage of over 55.
Yeah, well, no, I'm just saying if that, if that, if that holds true. You know, that, that'd be great.
So that also, so we have about apartment units. The, the nice thing about the apartment units is we can do 20% of them affordable, but the entire building counts.
Yes.
Towards our percentage, which is fantastic. So right now, the conceptual plans show roughly 320. I think if you filled every single unit with two kids per unit, which is gonna be hard in some of the smaller ones, like you're not gonna put two kids in a studio. Could you? Yes. Do, do you want to?
I hope you could. Be two, that'd be awful close.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I think we can agree there's gonna be an increase in student population.
There will be an increase, but one of the things, Barry, that we found with the housing production plan, as part of that study, there's sort of this, this curve with the number of, like, young students coming in. And like, right now, the folks, like those of us, like myself, that have young children in the elementary school, that's sort of that balloon age. And as they get, the, the younger classes are coming up, the data that was provided by the consultant we used, that we pulled, it's getting lower and lower and lower.
Yeah, the, the younger couples aren't having children.
Right, they're, they're, they're saying that a lot, it's just, it's just two children now, but, but I'm just saying, you know, that, like I said, I think.
There's a lot of couples aren't having children at all.
Yeah.
I think we can agree there's gonna be, 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 be a certain amount of increase of students, whether it's 500 or, or, or 800, there's gonna, there's gonna be an increase to the school system.
I doubt it'd be anywhere near that.
Uh, well, I mean, I guess, you know, I guess just, I mean, that, that just, you know, see what, you know, like I said, I mean, if you figure, if you figure two, two students per 300 and something, you know, so, I mean, but, uh, you know, when you, when 300 something in units, that's, you know, just throwing that thought out, you know, but.
But also, Barry, you gotta keep in mind.
Hopefully, hopefully it's lower, but, you know, but like I said, I mean, I think there's gonna be definitely some more students anyway.
Well, you know, you need students because we get, we get compensated from the state based on the amount of students.
Right, right.
And if they do school choice and leave the system, we lose that money. So you really need to re, to bring that in. We've got the capacity, and we've got a building that has the capacity for many more students, and we're not filling it, and so.
Right, so I mean, I, I guess that's what they're looking at, to get some additional revenue, have, you know, school choice from some other towns, you know?
Right, but also, if you bring in, you bring some students in, you're gonna get that extra money coming in.
Right, right, no, that, no, you're, you're, uh, we, I agree on that with you, Harry.
Right, I mean, you, you don't have to add anymore, you don't have to add teachers on because you're just adding some more to the classroom.
Yeah, well, it all depends, you know, like I said, how many, you know, uh, if they're gonna need any, you know, that, that means, I don't know how that works, like I said, I guess, I guess, uh, you know, my next question would be, like I said, is that, you know, when I attended the, uh, the FinCon meeting the other night, like I said, I know this, this doesn't, this doesn't apply to the project, but, uh, hopefully they'll get input from the town department heads and the, the school committee, you know, if this, if this project, if, like I said, we're gonna need some additional police officers, uh, fire, uh, you know, any teachers, you know, just to see if, uh, you know, if, if, if there would be that, uh, you know, from, you get the perspective from the town department heads and the, and the, you know, the school superintendent.
I can tell you right now, Barry.
Hopefully they'll have that meeting when, you know, when the project comes up, you know?
Right, but I can tell you right now, as it stands, is without this project, we're shot police officers right now, we're shot fire department personnel, we're shot people on the highway department.
Right, so, so, yeah, so.
This project comes in, this brings in a lot of revenue too.
Right, so, so, so say, so, you know, just throwing hypothetical up, they say the town gets $500,000 in taxes. I mean, you're gonna have to, like I say, hire those additional people or whatnot. So that's all, you know, part of the, the, you know, the proposal.
But we also get a, we also tend to get a good paycheck from the state.
Right, they're, they're talking that, that $1.3 million bonus. But, but Harry, you, you know, you know, the state, I mean, uh, uh, 72% of the voters in the, in the state voted for this, the legislature to be audited, and that has never happened. And so I guess, you know, keep our fingers crossed and just be cautiously optimistic that, that we get the, that bonus payment, you know?
But I tell you, Barry, that this land's gonna be developed one way or another.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, I, I mean, that, you know, that's, you know, it's something, something eventually is gonna happen there. I mean, uh, you know, so, but, but I mean, it'll be up to the, you know, the registered voters and they'll, they'll let them, you know, decide. And, and, uh, you know, hopefully they'll also talk to the, I don't know if they're talking with the abutters yet, but.
Yes.
But I know like that, on, you know, remember when the cross-street school situation, how, how attentive the registered voters were for the, uh, you know, listening to the abutters? So, I mean, hopefully, you know, their, all their concerns are, you know, taken into accord, you know?
Right.
And, um, but, uh, you know, I, I, uh, I think that it's 22 or 23 acres there. And the assessors department assesses the land at, like, I think it's like, uh, 243,000. That's the assessed price, but I don't, I don't know what the market value is, so, but I mean, that'd be up to the board.
Market value is way up there.
Yeah, so, but, uh, see what, you know, I don't know, but, but that's just like, I mean, the Aldridge School was assessed at 200,000 and, and they let that go for, what, 50,000? So I guess they have a broadway what they can get for the property, you know?
Yeah, but they, they, they already go 50,000 because it's gonna be done, it's being used by the community center to bring in, uh, uh, childcare, which we need desperately.
Right, right, and plus we also gave them 2.3 million of, uh, ARPA funds too to help them.
Right.
So, so, yeah, so being, but I'm saying they have a lot of, I'm just saying they have a lot of leadway of what they wanna sell.
Helping the community as a whole.
Town property for, it doesn't always have to go by the, the assessed value.
Well, no, you'd never have to. I mean, we saw a fire department that stations real cheap too.
Yeah, yeah, so, 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 yeah, so. Yeah, so, so, so I guess it's whatever the, the Board of Selectmen decide, but hopefully if they, you know, if they do sell it, it, it comes to a good price. But, but at the last town meeting, people brought up, you know, that we, we just spent $1.4 million of, for the open space up at Castle Hill. And this is open space, whether it's not accessible or not, but, uh, it's, it's still open space. And, I mean, I know some people had some concerns at the, at the last town meeting when this came up, you know?
Yeah, but what, the, the development will give us more open space in the end.
Right, but it, but it'll be part of a massive development, you know?
Well, it'd be open space.
Right, it'd be open space, but be, but it wouldn't be like natural, it wouldn't be, what you have there now is natural open space. The open space that will be returned back will be, you know, some of it will be natural, but it'll also be like a park and, and a playground. And I forget something else that, that talking about. And, and that still has to be conferenced out on who's gonna maintain that, you know? And then if, and then if that property will always be open to the Northbridge taxpayers, you know?
Yes, that's part of the requirement. And we're allowed to access that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, hopefully it will, but you never know what can happen down, down the road, you know?
Well, you can't change the accessibility.
No, well, I mean, you hope, but I mean, but I'm sure, like, you know, I'm sure, like, those over 55 units would probably be going, by the time they get them up, probably be like $650,000. And then you have all the people there and, and then they start seeing all these people sauntering around and saying, what do you mean, this is all open to the, to the public? And you know how things start and get craziness, but hopefully, hopefully it always remains open to the, you know, to the Northbridge residents, you know?
I, I don't see that happening, I mean, and you're talking, don't forget when they did, we did, uh, what they call Granite Hill, whatever, yeah, it's called Granite Hill.
Oh, it'd be Castle Hill.
Over 55.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, those are selling for half a million dollars and, or more. There's some that are going for much more, almost a million dollars.
Where's that, Harry?
Stone Hill.
Stone Hill, yeah.
Off of Church Street.
Oh, yeah, 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 but I mean, but, but, uh, but they don't have like a.
They have no problem selling them, believe me.
Yeah, but I mean, but that, 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 they don't, they're not gonna have the playground and the, and the, and the whatnot, the, the other, um, facilities for, for the, for the residents.
Well, if you look at, if you look at the map, the drawing of the project, the playgrounds aren't anywhere near there, you know, 55.
No, but I'm just saying, you know, it's just, uh, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be open to the public. I mean, it's, you know, but, uh, you know.
Well, there's, there's open space, there's open space on Stone Hill that's open to the public.
Yeah, well, I mean, like I said, hopefully it all works out, but, but I'd, I'd like to see a commitment from the town that, you know, if there's ever, ever an attempt to stop the, you know, Northbridge residents from coming in there,
Right, well, I, I mean.
That the town steps up and, and protects the vested interests of the Northbridge taxpayers, you know?
Every, every housing development in town has open space that's accessible for the town.
Yeah.
You go to that Reservoir Heights down by New Fly.
Yeah, they, 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 they do like a little bit of open space somewhere in, in the project, you know?
Right, and Reservoir Heights, they even have a parking lot. I know they do because I had it put in, I was on the Planning Board. I made sure it was a parking available.
Yeah.
And you got it, the same thing at Presidential Farms.
Yes.
And you actually got a bike trail there that they had to build, going, breaks you right down to the Blackstone River, to the railroad tracks anyway.
Right, right, and, um, I know like.
But it doesn't have been a problem.
It's gifted back to town.
I know last night, Harry, like, um, you and Rusty were talking about how, you know, all the open spaces is disappearing for the, for the wildlife and animals and things like that. And, um, you know, so, you know, like I said, I'm sure people think about that too, you know?
Well, we get that happening everywhere anyway.
Oh, I know, I know, and, and like I said, we're getting a lot more, uh, wildlife migrating down from Canada too, you know?
Right, but, you know, if, 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 well, if people start moving out of the state, you're gonna have that situation.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, well, it, and, and, um, but, you know, like, like, like Rusty brought up a good point last night. Like, where Massachusetts is the seventh most taxed, um, state, but yet it's number 39 when it comes to the state giving back money to cities and towns. And I found this interesting, actually, New Hampshire and Vermont give more money back, uh, the state governments in those two states give more money back to cities and towns than Massachusetts does. So it's, it's really, um, you know, like I said, I, I think it's a situation that hopefully would somebody, you know, starts paying attention to. And because, uh, you know, the state, the state is definitely should be giving more money back to the cities and towns. And, you know, and, and if this project goes through, you hope that we do get that, that bonus money. But, but like I said, you know, anything can happen with the state, you know?
Right.
But, um, all right, that's just, so, so just, just so I know, the, that, that, this, this, this is just for 40R and the 40S? It's not for the project itself?
No.
Okay.
The project would have to go through the Planning Board.
I can appreciate everything you do and, and, uh, I'm glad you guys are on, talking and discussing this. And, uh, I'll see you guys at the town meeting.
All right.
Stay safe and be well now.
Okay, yeah.
Bye.
If this is approved, the project still has to go through the Planning Board.
Correct. Extensive.
Oh, it doesn't allow you to do, do the overlay. It allows you to do an overlay.
Correct, so it'll still be industrial.
Right.
It'll have an overlay similar to Rockdale Mills. Is an overlay district, and then the Walmart is an overlay district.
Shiny Rocks.
Yeah.
Shiny Rock Golf, I know I was a part of that. And that was a good deal. I mean, there are some problems, they had some drainage problems. But I think it's been a great asset to, to the Northbridge. Beautiful golf course, brings in a lot of business. So, I mean, they've expanded, they now put another, a nine-hole in.
Yes.
Across from, uh, the original Shiny Rock. So, I mean, it does work, but, uh, like I was telling, I was saying, this does not allow it to ha, take place, it doesn't take place automatically.
No, it doesn't.
It goes through the Planning Board and it's gonna be approved in the design and everything else. And the Planning Board will have oversight on everything.
Yes, and then we'll be able to bring the residents in for a hearing and then help make sure we can mitigate to the best of our ability the impacts on the abutters.
And believe me, we are gonna have something, yeah, Barry's, well, that doesn't mean we're gonna get a 40B. But you're gonna chance you're gonna get. And believe me, we are gonna have something, yeah, Barry's as well, that doesn't mean we're gonna get a forty B, but you're good a chance you're gonna get something.
Yes.
Because they're desperately looking, the state desperately looking, especially looking along the MBTA. And we're considered an MBTA community.
Correct.
So, yeah, believe me, Sutton's worried about it too, they changed, they had to change their zoning.
Yes, we were fortunate that we already had zoning that covered that.
Yes, yes, so if we weren't ahead of that, we would, we'd been in trouble on that. Okay, we wanna go into, uh, Article ten. Is, uh, the, the I three zoning district across the pre, uh, industrial, okay, that would be the overlay.
So, that is that second, um, is it possible to bring up the map with the parcels?
Here we.
So, on this map, the bright blue one, that's the town-owned land.
Yes.
The parcel behind it and then the yellow parcel are all privately owned right now, and so the, it almost looks greenish on the screen here, but it's the one next to the teal blue. That would be rezoned for residential and that would allow the, uh, fifty-five plus community to be built. The bright yellow parcel, that's what we're looking to do for DR.
Which would be apartments.
Correct, and mixed use, so, a, a nice thing that, that we also conceptually show in the project that we could get is maybe like restaurants or businesses along the front, and again.
Yes, well, mixed use.
Mixed use.
Yes, which, which is necessary too.
And access to some really nice hiking and biking trails that are currently challenging to access. And so, uh, Gary, myself and the landowner and, um, Dave Pickart from Conservation Commission all hiked all up through that land, probably, I wanna say a year ago, just to see it, and there's some, there's some really nice trails and geological features that we could work with the developer to potentially preserve.
You know, another thing developers talking about is access to the high school fields.
Yes, so that is one of the things that we had talked about is providing, uh, second means of access up into that backfield. It looks like there's about sixteen parking spots and we would need to do a bridge over the, the brookway. So like, you can see like the green, it looks green on the screen, but that's, um, like a, like a brook or a larger creek area. Um, that allows access to the backside of the fields and like for anyone who's had to bring a kid up there for sports, myself. It's a hike going up for soccer, um, and so that'll give a little bit.
Fields are lousy, well, wait a minute, maybe they are lousy because they're not used that much. But if we got access to it, we could probably make them better.
They're, they're pretty good, and they're act, at least when I'm there, there's a lot of kids on them.
Yeah.
So, could we use it more, could it be more utilized? Sure.
Absolutely, I mean, right now, who wants to go up there for soccer because you gotta go a hike and a half to get there?
That's, that's where you go.
Right. You got some handicap parking, right?
Yes, we do.
But that's it, now we have access for everyone to park.
More people.
Or more people to park.
There's more access to it, which would be nice.
And easier to access. You wouldn't have that long hike.
Yes, so, potentially.
But that's if the project goes through.
Yes.
And like I said, that is not yet, this, that's not the situation right now.
Nope, this, this article, this warrant article is simply for us to do the zoning article.
Yes.
Then we would bring a project in to look at it under the provisions of the zoning article. If anyone wants to read it, there are copies available in the town clerk's office and there are copies available through the planning board webpage. Uh, we do have sections of what we do want on that property and what we don't wanna see on that property. Um, it establishes setbacks, the percentage of affordable housing, and it allows us substantially more control than a forty B, which is the most likely alternative if this doesn't pass.
And that article is by petition.
This, and, this one's by petition, by the landowner.
Yeah, by the landowner.
Correct.
Which only required them to get, uh, it'd be ten signatures, 'cause it's to, it's scheduled town meeting. And same with the next article, Article eleven is by petition.
Correct.
And this seeks to change the zoning bylaws by rezoning the land located on Church Street and showing on partial aid when not, we're talking about the vacant bank next to Burger King.
Correct.
And it's been vacant for a long time now.
About ten years, someone said?
Yeah, and it's a beautiful building too. And it is, it, I know some people say, well, they don't wanna marijuana, well, they don't really show like they're selling marijuana, they don't have all kinds of advertising on them. And, uh, it, they're re- already located in town, they're located in the Ossman Park.
Correct.
They just wanna get in, in the main drag.
Yes.
And it's ideal for them because it's got a safe, which I think is required, they have to, they have to lock everything up at night.
There's very strict requirements.
Yeah, extremely strict requirements. As far as, as far as advertising and, uh, the way they're located and how, what the building looks, everything, there's a lot of restrictions.
Yes.
So here's a chance to get some more use out of the building.
Yes.
And, and, and put it to use.
And help a local business that brings in tax revenue.
He has a good amount of tax revenue, we're gonna give him some back because we overcharged him. But that, that was something that happened with the state and they went to court, so, that's not, that's not, that, not their fault.
No.
But they had to comply with the, with the actual law, but that, that's not a bad thing to happen. I don't see a problem, I know some people, I had people tell me that they don't like the idea it would be on the main drag. But like I said, they don't have big signs out there showing you marijuana or.
No.
All, all kinds of adverti- they don't have any advertising, they basically have a sign that says who they are.
You'd have a sign that says the business name and it, you can't see.
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't show the, what they're selling.
Nope, you can't see into, like, if you drive by any of them in surrounding towns, you're like, you can't see into the building. Um, it's very difficult, it's, they make it harder for you to see, it's not like a liquor store where like you can drive up to like a liquor store and there's like liquor all in the front of it.
Yeah, and he on signs and advertising signs and everything else, can't do that.
No.
And in fact, the only place they can advertise is on billboards.
Yes.
So, it's very restrictive, and I'd like to see it get used because I'm surprised the property hasn't deteriorated.
Yeah.
But this, I guess the current owner has kept it up fairly well, which is good.
Looks like it's in.
I was hoping to see a bank come in there, but it doesn't look like it's gonna happen. Then we get down to Article twelve, this one is of course a Rockdale Mill.
Yes.
And new owner, uh, I, I guess Polytech is moving out of there, I think next month.
Yep.
Yeah, November, so it'll be vacant for most, but they're gonna keep the businesses that are there.
Yes.
Which I don't think they're legal right now in the zoning, 'cause it's zoning industrial.
Um.
I'm not sure.
But the Curtain Factory and the Rug Factory, I know those of us have lived in town for a really long time.
They've been there forever, yes, and we'd like to keep them there.
Yes, they'll remain as my.
This'll make them legit. Because this would rezone it to allow for commercial as well as, uh, residential. And here again, try and get an apartment in Northbridge, there's nothing available.
No, there was like five when I looked last, five, maybe six, all north headed towards like, somewhere on the lower side, somewhere closer to two thousand, somewhere over two thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
Which is wild.
And he's gonna make these more affordable.
So then that'll take our inventory and get us even closer to that ten percent, which is great.
Exactly, yes, and that'd cost us anything. And he is trying to, he's, he's talking about, uh, finding parking, which is a problem right now. Even with the Curtain Factory and the Rug Place, it's still, it's, it's limited parking, but he's gonna have more parking, he's looking at putting a parking garage in and, uh, looking at making parking available around the building. And also takes away that problem we have with the, uh, trucks loading.
Yes.
Cause they won't be doing that anymore.
Yep.
And this, it, it, it'll keep a historic mill intact, that's the other factor too.
Great project, and if you look at Linwood Mills, how nice is that?
Oh, the Linwood Mill's fantastic.
Going, if you've been to the new Honeysuckle.
Yes, oh, yes.
At, at where the Murder Hill Brewery or any of the businesses that are in there, it, it's gonna be.
I'm there every Tuesday 'cause I enter, I do a show with, uh, Jeannie Hebert on the chamber, do a radio show. And, uh, so I'm in there all the time, it's beautiful, and they, and they got great businesses in there and they're doing well.
Yeah.
And it's affordable again.
That'd be great for Rockdale, I mean, I grew up in Rockdale, or just outside of Rockdale, behind what was called the Bungalow.
Oh, okay.
Um, I think that'd be.
I'd like to see something done with that.
Yes, every time I drive by.
Uh, my, my suggestion, I was on a committee to do the bike path.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I gave them a route through Northbridge, and I said, why don't we take the state by that building and make it a parking lot for the bike path?
Yeah.
You know, so you have, 'cause you, some people aren't gonna go all the way, but they like to ride part of it. And here's a chance, they bring, you could bring your bike and ride part of it that way, but that's another day. But anyway, yeah, it, it, it really, and, and it's gonna keep the mill looking more like it did back when it was a mill.
Mm-hmm, it'll restore and preserve, which I think is, you know, an important thing to, to the townsfolk, especially where we've lost like some significant historical properties.
Yes.
Recently, so.
Yeah, so this would be great, and, you know, we, we, we got a new intersection going in there eventually.
Mm-hmm.
But you're gonna take a lot of truck traffic out.
Yes.
Because it's, it's not gonna be, after you say, Polyphone is moving out by the, by November. And so you're gonna get, but not encourage them to bring more industry in, let's encourage them to go with this residential. Yeah.
So, all of these zoning articles that we voted on in the planning board, just so folks know, they were all supported unanimously.
Yes, and the planning board doesn't take things lightly, they did a lot of research on this and then, that, oh, I was on a planning board when this first came about.
Yeah.
And that was a few years back now.
The forty R? Yeah, I think you were, you were still on then, right?
Yeah.
This has been.
When they first started talking about it.
Yeah, years and years of work and thoughtful studies.
This is not, not something that would just co- come up with overnight.
No.
Uh, we have a, can you show a picture of the, uh, actual plan, uh, Aaron? There you go, that, now, right up above there is the over fifty-five. So, and over fifty-fives have turned out great, uh, Stone Hill was a great example, I think they worked out real well. And we, we're getting a lot of people, out of ta- out of towners that sold their home, moved in there and love it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's like a community in itself.
Yes.
And that would be the same situation there, then down below would be the apartments. Here again, if you're looking for an apartment in Northbridge, good luck, because there's just nothing available.
No, it's extremely limited.
And needs are gonna be affordable, and by affordable, we're not talking, uh, people that are, you know, that are unemployed or on welfare or what have you, you're talking people with, with, with average incomes in Northbridge.
Correct, so there, there are income limitations for this, so, it's about sixty-nine thousand and change for one person, so, fresh out of college, maybe wants to move back to Northbridge, grew up here, loves it, um, like new into the workforce.
You know, you know, that, that would say seventy thousand dollars, that's probably a school teacher.
Potentially.
Yeah, because that's about what you're making. So come on, they're not talking, uh, people, you know, people with, that are destitute.
No, and so affordable, um, so if you have like a single person about sixty-nine thousand and change, like maybe a family of three, eighty-nine thousand four hundred.
Yeah.
And then the rent prices, the max allowable rent for affordable is seventeen thirty-eight for a studio.
Yeah.
Which is, it's just wild to me, 'cause when I was first out of school, I lived close to Boston and I, I split a pretty big apartment for what, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month?
Oh, my God.
On a thirty-two thousand dollar a year salary and that, that is just not the world.
You won't find that apartment in Boston area again.
No.
No way.
No.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking, you know, and these are average wages in Northbridge, I think.
These are, these are average wages, these, there's, um, a lot of folks that would benefit from this, so.
That can't find an apartment right now.
Yeah.
I mean, you got people living with parents.
Yes.
Because they just can't afford a, they can't afford an apartment at these rents that are out there now.
That's true.
And, and that would, I'd imagine that includes their heating.
Uh, that I'm not sure, but potentially.
The apartment complex includes heat and electric.
Yeah, that, that we would have to check with, but the, the max allowable, again, studio is seventeen thirty-eight.
And we're not talking all the apartments that way, that's only a por- portion of them.
Twenty percent indistinguishable from the other apartments.
Right.
So it's not like you're gonna be able to point it out and be like, oh, that's the affordable one, they're, they're all supposed to be the same.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that, it's really, it's a great advantage to somebody starting out. A young couple gets married in Northbridge now, they can't afford a house.
No.
You can't afford an apartment.
Or, or folks that don't wanna live in a fifty-five, like, maybe someone who's.
Yeah, they don't wanna go to the over fifty-five, they just wanna have an apartment.
Yeah, they want, and like, or retired folks, empty nesters.
Say you're, you're retired, a retired widow.
Yeah.
A widower, and you, you just wanna live in an apartment, you get a studio apartment, nice and small, you don't, you don't have a lot of work. And I, I imagine it includes your heat and your lights, so it's, it makes it affordable for you.
Definitely.
And you're living on, you know, social security and a small retirement.
Definitely, so, uh, Barry was asking some questions about incentive payments, so I wanted to clarify a couple numbers.
Yes.
There is a one-time zoning incentive for up to about five hundred units of affordable and that's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we go over five hundred, I think it goes to about six hundred thousand dollars. And then the nice thing about it being an overlay and it remaining industrial is we get a bonus payment for density of three thousand dollars per unit as they build the units.
That's a one-time payment.
Yes.
But that's, that helps a lot.
Yes.
And the thing is, you, you get compensated, the state pays you per student.
Correct.
Part of a problem right now is we have a lot of students leaving on the, on the, uh, school choice, and that money goes with them. Also, we have a large amount of students coming in that have special needs. And here again, that takes a little more cost, we don't necessarily have that situation, and we don't have that at all with the over fifty-five. Because I don't care what Barry's, Barry's wrong on anyone, you can't live in the unit if you're over, if you're under fifty-five.
That's correct, or at least other units, like my father-in-law lives in a fifty-five plus now and you have to be fifty-five plus.
Yes, you can't even, you can't even be married to someone under fifty-five.
Oh, wow.
You, you gotta both be over fifty-five.
Yeah.
I know, I, I was there when we wrote the bylaw. They're pretty strict about that, you can have your kids visit you.
That's correct.
That's why I have some of these units have two-bedroom apartments, uh, two-bedroom units, because they can have visitors. But they can't stay on a permanent basis.
Yes.
You can't have your kids enroll, enrolled in the school system.
No.
You can't give an address for, uh, Stone, my address is Stone Hill Road, no, no, it doesn't work. So, I mean, this is, and we, 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 we're gonna, the population's gonna grow in this town, regardless of whether you like it or not.
Yeah.
Let's do it in a way that the planning board oversees it, it's done in the constructive way, as, as a benefit to the town. You need growth.
Yes.
You know, we're talking about, uh, probably, perhaps doing an override of two and a half. Well, they're talking about that next year.
Right.
'Cause of the school, well, if you've got enough growth, you don't have to do that.
Correct, it's a balancing act.
Right, and that, we're, we're allowed growth, you can do growth under two and a half and raise your taxes that way.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, you, you're in a planning board, what are they, builders are coming in now, the big thing is, uh, duplexes.
Yeah, yeah, the, the duplexes with the frost wall in between that look like single-family homes.
Yeah.
A lot of those.
Yeah, and the reason they're doing that is because it's, it, you can, you can sell them for less, so they make it more affordable to pay to, to buy. They make it more affordable to pay to, to buy. Or, or they can rent them.
They still, like, when you look at the pricing on some of those homes, the new homes that are those like duplex with the shared frost wall, they're still pretty pricey.
Oh yeah.
They're still five, six hundred thousand dollars.
But they're still within range, better range than what you, you'd buy a, a new house.
Yeah, so, like a full large house and like a private, like maybe like a pre- presidential estates.
Yeah, oh, and, and they're selling. So, you know, you, we gotta have something affordable too.
Agreed, so another point of clarification for forty S, it's a, like a companion. Um, I guess you'd say article, it's a. A way for us to get reimbursed for any new students that wind up in the district, so. If I decide to move to the apartment with my two kids, we don't get reimbursed for that.
Right.
It's any new students that are brought into those apartment buildings as a result of the forty R. You get reimbursement, it's a, it's not a fixed number, it's based on like how much you collect with like taxes.
They have to come from out of town, in other words.
So if whatever we, it's the, if there, there's an overage amount and then you get reimbursed for it and that goes through, the school applies for that is my. But that helps, so, that helps incentivize us to be proactive. By giving us control, by having incentives, um, as opposed to the forty B, which is just a strict mandate, you will do this. As opposed, instead of like us coming in and deciding how it's done.
Okay, you know, one time that area was looked at to do uh industrial. And commercial.
That's correct.
But industrial is not catching on like it would. I mean, one forty six is seen in the industrial world, we don't have one forty six.
No, so it was studied for industrial and I think you're probably on the board.
Yes.
They, they couldn't get anyone to take it cause it was too far from one forty six.
Right.
And also, do you want trucks driving down either Linwood Ave? Or down Church Street through that plumber's corner to get there, um.
Plumber's corner is a nightmare now, you're mad. Truck trafficking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it, it doesn't make sense as industrial.
No, so, or it could be more solar, but.
Yeah.
I feel like we kind of have enough solar.
I think we're overdoing the solar now.
Yeah, we have quite a bit of solar in town.
Yes.
Let's, let's do something that's gonna help the town, that we study, that's, um. We're, we're seeing this come up as a topic, we're doing the master plan right now for the planning board, is ongoing. And when we do these workshops, one of the things that takeaways that we saw was. Folks really wanted to see more affordable housing and less like single family home developments. That was a pretty common theme, so this is in alignment with our town's master plan. Um, it's supported by the housing production plan that we did in twenty twenty-three that took a couple years. And um, it's been heavily studied.
Based on the size of the footprint, you get a bigger return on your tax dollars for apartments. Than you do for a single family.
Yeah.
Cause when you look at the, the, the value of that property with apartments as opposed to if we develop with all single family. And that could be done right to, to, well, it's industrial now, part of it, or some is residential.
It's all industrial now.
Oh, it's all industrial?
Yeah, the privately owned lot and uh the lot that.
You wanna have, you know, you, you wanna go develop industrial, I think we, we're getting up with Osmond Park right now in that area. And even that isn't totally industrial, because a lot of it's hospital.
Yeah.
Which has worked out well.
The urgent, with the urgent care, in the clinics.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, industrial, we could, we're gonna do, put a bunch of storage units in there?
Not on that landscape, without serious effort.
Your, your, your return is very low, you don't pay a lot of taxes. But this, here we're talking, it's a good mix with the over fifty five. Over fifty five is a great return on your taxes, it's like condominiums, condo, condo units give you a great return. For the amount of space they take up and how much you get in there and you, and you mount it, you don't get that many kids.
Yeah.
You're not talking large apartments here, we're talking two-bedroom are the biggest, right?
Uh, yeah, I think it's, there, there was talk of two bedrooms, like maybe three, but mostly like one and two bedrooms.
Yeah, one and two bedroom, in studio.
Not, and studios.
So you're, you're not talking a lot of, a, a, a large families come in, but here again, you made a good point. People like, uh, parent ki- uh couples aren't having a lot of kids anymore.
It's, it's.
Not having any.
Yeah.
So the population, that's a, a problem we got in the country, uh, population is not growing. So, I don't see, I think this is a great move.
Yeah, I think the numbers, like even if we took all three hundred and twenty units and put two kids in each unit. You're not gonna hit that amount, I, I wanna say the number, when we looked at it, was like. One point three per unit was the like number, the statistical number that you would get, and that was on the high end.
I, I really think you're gonna find a lot of single people moving in there.
Yeah.
Or couples that just live together.
Yeah.
Because it'll be affordable to them, areas not now.
No.
And, and we got rent in town where you have multiple bedrooms. So, why would they look here?
Definitely.
You're looking at what we already got anyway. So I, I, I know, I think this is a great move, I think it's gonna work out well, now the town meeting is in two weeks on Tuesday night.
Yes.
At the high school, in the high school field house.
Correct.
So, not the usual place, this takes a two-thirds vote.
Okay.
I believe, cause it's a zoning issue.
I would have to check on that.
I'm pretty sure, if I remember correctly, uh, it takes two-thirds. In fact, I think all of them take a two-thirds. So, you know, we gotta get a good turnout.
Yes.
It's, 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 it's how meeting is so simple now because you can vote by pressing a button.
Yeah.
Nobody knows how you vote.
They have like little clickers.
Yeah.
Just click.
See, and you don't have to stand up or yell out, it's in, the guy next to you knows how you voted, no. Nobody knows how you vote, you just keep your thing covered and you hit the button you wanna hit and nobody does that. So it's, every, every ballot is a secret ballot. So come on, come on down, you know, and you, it doesn't, and we're only talking a total of uh twelve articles.
That's not bad.
Yeah, it'll, it'll go fast, the first half dozen articles are gonna go real fast, they're just uh housekeeping articles.
Yeah, those go really fast. Come down to town meeting, I, you know, that first town meeting that I went down to, um, was the one where we were voting to sell the land.
Yes.
Cause, the few years ago, it, it's why I'm on the planning board. Um, I, I really value open space, we all do.
Yeah.
And I think doing this will allow us to maintain that open space if it's gifted back.
I, I was on a planning board for almost thirty years, you, you get a lot of open space when you work with developers.
Yeah.
We require it and it works out better. And it's permanent open space, it's never gonna be developed.
Correct.
You know, if, uh, if you don't do some control by having the planning board overseeing. You can end up, this could be totally developed.
Yes, with, with much closer setbacks.
Yes.
Much, much closer, one of the things, even looking at the conceptual plans. Like the planning board had asked to move some of the buildings further away from the residents, um, that were just south of it. Because these buildings are a little bit taller and the next time we saw a plan, it was moved back more. I think there's definitely opportunity if we're, we're giving it through this vote to. Shape what this looks like and really work with the developer.
Exactly, when, if you go with the forty R, you're gonna have public hearings.
Yes.
And you can come in and participate.
Correct.
Okay, we gotta go, well, thank you for coming in, Becky.
No problem, thank you so much.
And hopefully we'll see y'all at the town meeting.